These are the things we want to cover in today's discussion. This PhD coursework session, we are dealing with the art of literary research. And yesterday we are talking about the vocation, the spirit of scholarship. And there we discuss the difference between the critic, the researcher and the scholar. So, uh, there are no watertight compartments, but still, uh, what is it that a critic is doing? And then how we can grow from being a critic to a researcher? And then from researcher to scholar, so that our work seems to have some sort of scholarship also. Now, in the same line, in the same line, these topics we want to cover today. So first topic we will very briefly touch upon is necessities to make for a rewarding research project. Uh, now as we were discussing yesterday also, that this, these topics are more about the, 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 we can say making of the mind, they are more for, uh, what we call it is, uh, making of the mind. Making of, yeah, the mind of research scholar. That is, uh, uh, there, this, this topic, the, the, there is a mixture of technical sides of writing and taking research, uh, as, as something that is technical. But at the same time to become a research scholar, we want, uh, we want to, we should have a special makeup of a mind. Uh, which obviously is not supposed to be just like a student, when we have a student in U G or P G. Uh, sometimes we might be doing some, some research-based work also, some small projects we might have taken. Uh, uh, some assignments we might have written, uh, but, uh, uh, still, all those things were done as a student. Now we have to, uh, uh, re-imagine, reinvent our mental capacities to become a research scholar. So thi- these sessions which we are, we are undergoing, they are more for making of the mind, making of the mind of the research scholar. So what kind of thinking and other things are necessary? So we may call it the softer aspect, the soft skills of the research scholar, that is what we can call it. Necessities to make for a rewarding, uh, research project. If you think that your research project at the end of your PhD work becomes very rewarding, rewarding, uh, uh, in a sense like, rewarding means something like, uh, you are invited to speak about it. You love to share ideas about your research project, you are very keen and eager to talk about it because you know that you have done something significant, you know that you have done something that people are still not very much aware about. You have really added to, uh, the knowledge systems, you have contributed, uh, in a, in a newer way. Like we get some, suddenly some new idea and we want to share with people, that this is what I have thought, this is how I have connected the dots. And I think that it is very novel and we want to say. Now when we have that spirit to talk about our research work while it is going, uh, at the end of the research work, then we can say it is rewarding, it is very rewarding. And, yeah, remember, when we want to talk, there is always somebody to listen also. If there is nobody to listen, then there is no need of talking also. So somebody is keen to, keen to, uh, invite you to speak about your work also. Keen to invite you and you speak and, uh, they, they want to listen from you also. That is called, we call rewarding research, uh, project, it is not just completing research project. So what are the necessities? So, well, we can say that what makes for this, necessities to make for a rewarding, uh, research project. Then, uh, we can say these words like, there should be a fair degree of imagination. A fair degree of, of imagination is required, uh, in, in the work. Uh, there should be originality of approach. Originality of approach is very much, uh, important, uh, in this. Uh, there is, uh, what we call it solidity of learning, solidity of learning. In the word, solidity of learning, uh, and a wish and will, wish plus will. Wish and will to see works of literary art and their creators work. As well as the creators, as well as the creators. And to see a wish and will, to see the literary works and their, 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 their creators and their creators from new perspectives, from new perspectives. Remember, there is a wish and a will also, to, to see a new perspective. Uh, and then, uh, uh, we can say that, uh, if thi- this is what happens in our work. Or if this is where our making of a mind is there, where it is thinking or working in this direction. Then there are ample chances that our research project, surely, surely will be, uh, 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 very rewarding also. Imagination, so we have to be highly imaginative in our thinking, though research is very scientific. But we know that, uh, uh, all sciences or mathematics or whatever called, they all are highly imaginative. Many times we give examples that all sciences or all technologies or inventions are by and not the result of imagination of the people. If Wright brothers do not imagine that something that is very heavy, heavier than air, the density of something is heavier than air can float, can fly, it is pure imagination. Uh, the science of the day, the physics of the day, uh, will say that, well, anything which is heavier in density can never fly or float. But then somebody makes steam engines and somebody makes an iron boat, an iron boat which is heavier than water will float. Or heavier than air aeroplanes can fly, pure imagination at work, that we see there, very important part, yeah? Originality of approach is very, very important, original. Now, when you were studying in M A, we, we, we used to deal with some texts, same text with various approaches. For example, I can remind you about studying of, uh, Hamlet, Hamlet text, uh, we, we applied so many approaches. For example, moral and philosophical approach is applied, race, milieu and moment approach is applied on it. Uh, feminist approach, uh, we applied, psychoanalytical study, uh, the approach we apply on that. Uh, cultural studies we apply and you know that, uh, all of this are like very original approaches, new approach in there. And every time we get new results from a particular text, every time new results, a new way of reading the text comes out from that. So, now, uh, all those things you have already studied, now you are there a- at, 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 at such a point that you have to now think of approaches which are not thought of or people have not seen in that way, very challenging task. Very challenging, that's why this making of mind is necessary that what is already there, variety of approaches, that if you are going to apply those things, you will not have originality of approach in your research work. So you have to think a lot about, you have to be highly imaginative, uh, in, in thinking of what new approaches you can apply or approaches which are not applied by them, approaches are already there. But people have not applied on the literary text that you want to, uh, see and you think that your application of that theory uh, is highly imaginative or very original in that sense. It has to come, it will come from solidity of learning. If you learn a lot, literature review helps a lot, but apart from that, your P A learning, your M A learning, your reading of all other, all other resources, uh, your knowledge about many other disciplines, all those things makes your learning solid. So if there is solidity of learning, if your base is very strong, then you understand the difference of just reading for the sake of reading, reading for research, uh, writing for the sake of writing, writing for research is altogether different thing. When we read literature or when we watch literature, uh, out of just, uh, just for the sake of enjoyment, it's a altogether a different uh, uh, end result that we perceive from that. But here we are not doing it only for that pleasure or that aesthetic delight. We are in search of a new kind of aesthetic delight. We are in search of a new kind of pleasure and that is more academic pleasures, academic pleasures, academic delights that we are looking for. Now if we feel that, well, I don't have academic delights, I do not have academic pleasures, uh, though, then it is better not to do research. It is better not to do, uh, because, uh, otherwise it, it will turn our, our life into hell. It will be a hellish kind of a life if we do not enjoy, uh, uh, reading for research. Or we do not understand that there is academic pleasure is much different from the aesthetic pleasures that normally people enjoy when they, when they approach a, a particular work of art or other things. That's why many people say that I love this writer, I want to work, I, I, I love to watch cinema or web series, I want to work in that. Or I'm, I, 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 I like this, so I want to do this. Well, all your likeness or your love or your, all these kinds of emotional attachments with that particular thing will all dissolve, it will evaporate, it will evaporate, will not remain, uh, in that way. The likeness, uh, and, uh, and, and the love, it, it won't be there. The only love or likeness that you should have is, is, is to know more, it is to, to know. If, if that is what is driving you, that I want to know something more about this, then only you will enjoy, you will enjoy the work of research. So that is, that should be your ultimate curiosity that in this area, in this region where I am working, I am curious to know more, I, I want to know this, I want to know that. It is not that I love or like, but what I love or like is I want to know more. So then that reading will be very rewarding. And then your wish, your will, uh, to look at writers' work of arts with new perspectives. That is, that is very, very important, uh, uh, thing. If you want to look at the way people have already seen, then there is no way of looking at those things. Uh, when people look at retellings, retellings of work of art, like you might have studied about a tempest and the tempest, Shakespeare wrote the tempest and M C Sear is writing a, a, a tempest. Now, if you want to look the way Shakespeare, Shakespeare or Shakespearean audience or the Renaissance, uh, 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 students have seen, then you cannot understand a, a tempest, uh, you can't even write a tempest kind of a work. It is retelling of that text can never happen in that way if you, if you were not ready to see the things from newer perspective. So when we approach retellings or adapt, adaptations from, uh, from book to cinema, at that time we realize that, well, the writer is having new perspective. Imagine Hamlet, Denmark's Hamlet, twelfth century Denmark Hamlet turned into, into, uh, uh, who can say twenty-first century Kashmir, Kashmir. Uh, and Hamlet becomes Heather. Imagine, uh, what kind of new perspective the filmmaker is reading into that, and Macbeth becomes Macbull or, uh, the author to Oomkar. You can imagine that what new perspective, uh, uh, the filmmaker like Vishal Paradwak have brought in. That is what is very important. If, if, if you tell the things as it is, then you can't, uh, understand that what are these new perspectives that the writers are, are bringing in here. So, uh, these examples, you may not be doing adaptation studies or retelling studies, you are not doing that. But to understand what is new perspective, which is very much necessary for all the research, we can give this example that how new way of looking is being brought in by the people. How this divergent thinking is becoming so important for this, uh, uh, writer. So when you say imagination and originality and other things, you can add one more word and that is divergent, uh, thinking. Uh, divergent thinking can help us make our, uh, work i- i- in such a way that our research project can be very rewarding, uh, also. Well, so you will see in this first point that these are all abstractions that we are talking about. It's not real, like the basic question when you sit down to write or to read is come dead, well, how to do this? How to do, uh, this all kinds of thing, uh, we know it is very important, but, but how, uh, still remains here. Now, now, now for example, if, if, if somebody tells you how, if somebody tells you, if I tell you how in this way, now then it is not original now. If it is told to everybody that this way you do like we have done in the, literature review, the step one, two, three, four. Now everybody will do that, there won't be any originality, everybody will imitate the seven, six steps that you are supposed to do. The literature review do not have any scope of any originality that you want to present. Well, you may say that, well, still I want to be original and I was not told, but I will present my literature review infographically. With the help of infographics, I will make a, a picture, a poster of my literature review and I want to present it. Normal idea, very good idea, you can do that, but now I have told you, now I have told you, now it is not original. Now it is not, uh, original, you have to think now something else apart from this one. That's why we should not go into how, how should be remain with all the research scholars. Let them explore in their own way, let that mental space remain with everybody that you do not streamline everything, we are streamlining so many things in research. Uh, like there should be chapter of introduction, then literature review, then analysis and then conclusion and then bibliography and document. Lots of those things are already there, there should be some space where things are not streamlined. Things are not like little, they are this way only, openness. And that is where it comes here, it will come here that you have to be imaginative. You should have divergent thinking to apply original approaches. Your, your solidity in learning will help you in doing those things there. So that is the first point that we wanted to discuss in this one. If you have any questions or any additions or anything you want to say, you are free to, to, to speak anything here. In the first point, if you want to say anything here, necessities to make for a rewarding research project. And deliberately we are not going into how, and we also discuss that why we don't want to discuss how. So that everything do not become very archetypal, very archaic and archetypal. But some scope of researchers' imagination and divergent thinking remains there, yeah? Okay, yes, any, any point, any, anybody would like to add in anything here? I, I hope you got the idea that what is, uh, what, what kind of mental makeup we are trying to, uh, see here, uh, among the research scholars. Okay, then, then we talk about second point, second point here is publish or, or, or perish this. Now this is, this is, we can say very pernicious idea. This is very pernicious idea and it is, uh, uh, i- i- it is very, very harmful in that way. The very idea of publish or perish is a very harmful idea to, to any kind of scholars. Because any scholarship under any kind of duress, any kind of duress, any kind of pressure to do uh, never leads to qualitative work, qualitative, qualitative work. Uh, when things are like forced upon the people, like if you will not publish, you will not publish, you will perish, you have to publish. And, and, uh, this is what, uh, Richard L T in nineteen sixties, nineteen sixties told about American universities. That the way American universities are coming out and telling that if the promotion of the teachers is to be done, it should be done with the idea of what public, publications they are doing. If you will publish, you will be promoted, if you will not publish, you will perish, you will become stagnant at one place. So the, the jobs, uh, research work, uh, uh, that all is connected with publications and other idea. Or job itself is connected with research, right? Jobs are connected with the idea of research. Like we see that many, many, many countries try to make a rule that well, PhD research will be compulsory if you want to become assistant professor. PhD will be compulsory if you want to become assistant professor. Now, if a research is compulsory, then it is very harmful. That there are less chances that the research can be of qualitative work. Or when publication is forced upon the faculty members, then also people will do, people will publish. But, uh, we will not be able to get qualitative research out of them. And when we see either of the thing, those who want to enter into academia as teachers, for them also it's a huge hurdle that, well, I want to become a teacher, I don't want to become a researcher. I want to become a teacher, well, ideally people say that good research scholars are very good teacher. And teaching and research go hand in hand, that also is fair idea, good idea. Ideally, it looks good on paper, that teachers should be researchers and that. Well, but at an entry level, when I, I don't know I will be a teacher of language or literature, that also is not sure. But I will be a teacher in a commerce college, in an engineering college, in a science college, in arts college or in any university, that also is not clear. At that time, how my research will add any value to my teaching? If I do research in literature and I have to teach compulsory English only or only grammar or only language, then how is it going to help? If I do research in E L T and then I have to, I apply for a job to teach literature, then how, how my research is going to help? So there are, there are very pernicious, very pertinent questions which leads toward the, this idea of the harmfulness of the research also. And if I am teaching, uh, 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 a, a, a particular subject, uh, in, uh, in any, any, any college or in a school also, school teachers also wants to do research and they want to do research in, in, for example, literature. Now they don't have to teach literature at all. So how is their research going to add any value to them as a teacher? They are going to deal with kids on. So people say that the best idea is that you, you, if you are teaching language, do research in language. If you are teaching literature, you do research in, in literature. But when you say at entry level you require PhD, where people are still not into the system of as a teacher, then if you do, then what will be, uh, the, the end result of that, that is something that raises a deep questions about that. In service people, we can say that when you do research in this area, it will be good for you, it will strengthen your teaching also, we can say that, but. Will that people remain there only as teacher or not? If they aspire, well, some people say that I am in school and deal with this, but I don't want to be in school, I want to go in college, but PhD is required. So I want to do PhD in literature, though that literature is not going to help me here. I do that and then I do not get a chance to become a teacher, uh, in any college. And, and I, I live forever in my, uh, my, my school only, then how this research teaching may be connected with each other also. Ideally, it is a good idea that teacher should be researcher, but they should be doing action research. They should be involved into the research which is very practically useful to them in what they are doing, what they are doing at that level. It has to, that is, perhaps the idea that research makes a good teacher or a good teacher is always a good researcher. But in, in the sense that what they are actually doing practically are those things very helpful to them or not, that is very important. Otherwise, many teachers just keep on doing research and traveling and seminars and conferences, fieldwork, survey and the thing, and teaching is almost zero, teaching is almost zero, they don't teach at all. They just travel and then do extension of their research work and they are constantly doing research work only and there is no, no teaching at all. Then what is the connection between teaching and, and research also? If it is a research institute, it is very good, but most of us are working in teaching institute. Now with new education policy, we may have a different institutes, some are research institutes, some are teaching institutes. Then, uh, things may be more clear, that those who want to join teaching institute, why should we ask for a research from them? A good teacher or a good researcher, a very complex proposition we can see here. But in the context of American universities, when promotions are connected with publications, that you have to publish this many articles in peer-reviewed journals, in U G C listed journals, in Scopus, in Web of Science kind of a thing, then, then people will be just running to publish so that they can get promotion. They do not have that eagerness to know something more and so they are writing and so that people can read and then they can encounter argue, they can write another article based on that or they question that article, that rarely happens. Then there is no growth of knowledge. If a, a publication of an article do not raise any questions in the mind of anybody and another people are not prompted to write another article to give an answer to that article, then we, we have a question that how does it add value to the growing of knowledge? Uh, it has to be always like, uh, that's why people, uh, when, while they are writing the papers or doing the research, they go to seminars and they present the paper which is half baked, half baked, it's still not complete. Your research is not complete, but you are going there presenting, so people will question you. And you will get an idea, well, in that direction I have not seen. Now I come back at my home and I start doing research in that direction. See, that is the idea that you are supposed to present in at least two seminars, your research work, your incomplete research work or wherever you are, you share so that there are some questions or people tell that, well, this is already done, here is the work. What new are you going to do? So we realize that, well, I am reinventing the, the purpose of seminar conferences or why that is necessary is this. But the big question, million dollar question, uh, is this that, uh, does that happen? Do we see that such kind of an interactions happen in seminars, conferences, such way when we come back home after any webinar or seminar conferences? Do we feel that, well, I am enriched academically or, or not? Sometimes people in physical thing, they say that, well, food was lovely, accommodations were very good, that is what they, they bring home. The quality of food, the quality of accommodations, the hotels, the rooms. Uh, or in, in webinars also many times where what other things were there, what their entertaining elements of entertainment were there or not or how things were going on, that perhaps many days people bring home from those, uh, uh, things rather than academic enrichment that becomes necessary also. So the very idea about publish or perish is a very pernicious idea, uh, which it refers. But today it has become more strong, this idea today has become more strong also. So today we may say that, well, don't publish if you do not like to write or you want to share anything and don't publish or don't do research in that way, but well, I can say that because I have now become a professor. And, uh, maybe perhaps now I don't have to publish for the sake of my promotion or a job now. So I can say that, but I can't tell that, I can't give that message to, to young scholars because they still have to build their life, academic life, where these things are necessary. So they have, have to move on the path of publications and other kinds of things there. So we can say that, well, it is necessary, so we will have to do, but always remember that once you cultivate the love for the knowledge, to know more, then if you will publish, it will always be going to be very good. This, this normally leads to unhappiness, it makes for an unhappy scholar also, we want to see who is a happy scholar here. A, a very oxymoron kind of a word, happy scholar. But this obviously makes, makes one, uh, uh, unhappy, unhappy scholar, unhappy scholar is what comes out from, from this, uh, uh, idea, publish or, or, or perish idea. Uh, so ideally we said that it's not a good idea, but practically it is the reality of today's academia. It is the reality of today's research environment, then we will have to be a part of, uh, uh, that. You can criticize this after you have broken the rooster coop, after you have broken the prison cage, then you can criticize it, but being within that parameters, you won't be able to criticize this system. This system is going to be much stronger, so you will have to keep on finding the spaces to publish your work. You will have to look at this, otherwise you are going to perish, that is for sure here, okay? So that is the second point that we wanted to discuss, the, the propositions about or the problems that are around the idea about publish or, or perish here, okay? Uh, again, anybody wants to, uh, if you want to add anything here or want to ask anything here? Any point if you want to make? Okay, then we come down to a very important point that you want to discuss, that what are the chief qualities of mind and temperament? What are the chief qualities, and this all are the important qualities, but what are the chief qualities of mind and temperament? That go to make up a successful and happy scholar. A successful and a happy scholar, well, uh, we can say that successful, fine, you can become. But whether you will be a happy scholar or not, that is problematic, that is very problem. Because people have said that, uh, the intellectuality and happiness do not go hand in hand. You, I, you can either be intellectual and knowledgeable or you can be happy. Or either you start being happy into whatever knowledge you have, which is always pricking us. It doesn't allow us to, uh, allow us to settle down with the things of the world. You always keep on questioning, you always keep on asking, you always have a kind of bee buzzing in your mind. But you can't do that, you, that keeps on buzzing, some kind of a bee keeps on buzzing. Uh, that, so happy scholar is a difference, you have to redefine happiness in that context. You need to redefine happiness, then only it goes, otherwise the way lamb can enjoy the happiness, the scholars cannot, the scholars can never be happy in that sense, uh, as such. Successful one can be, but, uh, again, the different thing. But what, what we want to see here is something like, uh, it says that there are two occupations which are very important to make up the mind of the successful and happy scholar and, and that is that of low and, uh, low and journalism. Low and journalism, yeah? So it, it tends to say, it tends to say that, uh, sometimes for a research scholar, even of Uh sometimes for a research scholar, even of literature, we are talking about the research scholar of literature here. For him also, if they do apprentice for a couple of months, apprentice of six months or so. With lawyers, criminal lawyers or with investigative journalist, investigative reporters. Investigative reporters, then they may learn something very interesting. Which is very necessary for making of the mind and the temperament of a research scholar, that is what is those aspects. So it says that uh when you talk about law, when you talk about law, what we one needs to learn is. Principles of evidence, principles of evidence. It is very important that comes as a part of of a lawyer or in juris adiction here. Uh and without understanding that what is this importance of evidence, proof. For anything that you say, this people can understand very well because in 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 a court. You can't make any statement without evidence, you require to produce evidence of each and everything. And that is where this learning is necessary because many of our scholars, they keep on writing things and then we ask that. Uh how do you come to know this, from where have you read this, what is the evidence of this proposal that you are making? And they said that, well, this is this is in public domain, this is everybody is aware about it, but well, fine, everybody is aware. But you as a research scholar is supposed to cite it, you have to bring the evidence that from where it came. You can't say that, well, this is my novel idea, it suddenly struck me, no, it never happens, you have read somewhere. Some maybe in the passing remark from, you got just passed through some billboard or newspaper and you got but. As a research scholar, you can't rely on anything that has just suddenly dawn upon you. Just suddenly dawn upon you and said, well, this seems to be very creative, innovative this or that, no, you have to go deep. To find before making any statements that people try to see those things, so principles of evidence or proof. Before making any statement in a research work becomes very, very necessary to understand. Uh uh this, from where is those ideas coming, that is very important part, so that is what we learn from this. And here, in 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 so far as in journalism and this is concerned, there is a very interesting thing about resourcefulness. Resourcefulness, which is very importantly found with investigative reporters, which people can get from that. And then also this resourcefulness, what does it try to say? It tries to say that knowing where to go, knowing where, knowing. Where to go for one's information, where are we going to get our information, where should I go, that. They are very well aware about. And how to obtain it, how to obtain. Where to go for information, how to obtain it and then ability, and then you have ability. Ability to recognize and follow up leads. Recognize and follow up leads, we are coming back to this words, tendency, tendency. To pursue, to pursue or in pursuit of facts. Pursuit of facts. So it says that from from this, the principles, while evidence is so important and without evidence you can't say anything, a single word can't be uttered. And here, where to go for information, how to obtain it. Ability to lead, lead and get and how, different idea. You you might have seen sometimes in cinema and film that when an investigative officer, police officer. Is trying to investigate something, he will go to so many people, in that, there may be the people who are cheaters, cheaters or. Uh the the bad people, the bad, he will go to bad people and take a lead because he is aware that. If I want to know something about the bad people, the bad people are the best leads. So they will keep even those people that from here I will get my information and and I know how it will work. So a a police officer will also try to perhaps do uh under the table means to to get information from the bad people. About the bad people, yeah, so how to take the leads and pursuit of facts. Ultimately, everything is about facts, without facts, you can't do anything because investigative reporters normally are dealing with crimes. And if you do any kinds of wrong reporting, there are chances that that can be case against the reporter himself, it can be out of job also. Recent examples, if you are following the journalism that is going on now, you might see that. People like Rajdeep Sardesai are very senior editors uh uh in a news channel, television news channel. He is uh he is taken off air for maybe for one month and he will not be paid salary also, that is. Why? Because he reported that one farmer died of the bullet from the police. Now that was not a fact, that was not the fact, it was it was just a rumor. And he made a story out of it and so many people tweeted and so there are lots of FIRs against those people who who. Who shared misinformation and this, so the life of this kinds of investigating reporter is very terrible, you will be next day you will be in prison. Uh in court, nobody will listen if you do not have this. Research scholar, if they they cultivate this law and journalism and they think that, well, each and every word that I utter. Has to be very, very, very significant and it it should have the evidence from where I am taking it. It can't be mere assumptions, it can't be just my assumptions or should not come from my assumptions about. What I think or believe that can be this or that, see, we are free to do interpretations, interpretations can be imaginative and other thing. But when we make statements of facts, at that time we can't assume, we can interpret, but we can't assume the things that. It can be this or 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 that also. And then it says that from both both of this, from both this. We find some interesting characteristics which are very useful to us and that is. Organization skills. Organization skills and our ability. To put facts together. Ability to put facts together, yes, so these are again very, very important thing. Now see, you you might have seen that uh even in writing answer, simple answer in examinations. The students who are very good in organization skills, they may score better marks than the other one who know. So many things, who is who is more knowledgeable, but is not able to have a better organization skills to present. The facts together in an appropriate, these are different abilities altogether. So when you sit down to write or when you are collecting your informations, if you do not have a better organization skills. Or ability to put facts together in an organized way, then also your writing will not have a shape. And when when other people will start writing and submitting, you will be confused. Where to start, what to write, what should I do in introduction, then this, that, and then uh there we 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 start facing that. Uh we are we are like held up in something that we are not able to write anything. We know so many things, but from where to start, what should be my first letter, paragraph, where to start, I don't know. Why that happens? Because organization skills and ability to put facts together in a proper trajectory is not there. And so we suffer and from this too, uh other disciplines, the work we get to know that how they work. How they work and how they present, that can give us a very interesting idea. So uh follow some of the legal stories, follow them, sometimes in some newspapers, some very interesting legal story. Is reported very well and detailed and if the the judges, judges are student of literature. They will use lot many examples from literature to support their judgment, to support their judgment, they will use lot many examples. And and those writings, now everything is available online, if you if you think that, well. Uh some case was going on, for example, Ram Mandir case, Ram Mandir case. If you download and read the document, verdict, final verdict, you will find very interesting way that evidences are put. Or or how some evidences are covered or how a space has been made to say that this land belongs to Ram Lallah. It was very difficult, uh evidence were very highly problematic in that case, evidence proof were highly problematic. But how in in a long legal legal battle for so many decades, after that how supreme judge panel has found a space to say something? And how they have made a space that, well, this space belongs to Ram Lallah and how they have given the, even though. Not enough evidences were there, but they interpreted things in a in a particular way. So that's verdict, or similar kinds of verdicts are very helpful, very useful in 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 interpreting and writing. And you can follow some of the wonderful stories in good magazines, sometimes magazines like Carab and Karva, we call it in Gujarati. Oh Hindi and the English caravan, there is a long story, but a beautiful story. And how they start and how they give proof and how they conclude the entire thing, that becomes very interesting to get from this writer. So you can, for your practical learning, you can follow some of the interesting court verdicts. Or some of the beautiful stories written by some good journalists in 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 those things, that can give this idea also. So this was that this part where we are, what are the chief qualities of mind and temperament? And that comes from law and journalism and this are something which helps us into learning or when we carry out our research. It can also help us in in different capacities also. See now, now as we work, we are in a digital era and so the the information is at our fingertips now. So like investigative reporters or like the the other other people, we don't have to travel a lot. Unless you do field work or your research is about field work necessarily, people don't have to travel, but in earlier days. People have to travel a lot, there are some copies of the books in some Mumbai library or Mysore library. And then you have to travel and go and and you have to find a space to procure those things, your communication skills with librarian. Everything mattered, everything was of so important thing that you can't just go and tell that, give me the book and people will give you, you can't say it is your job, so you have to do. It doesn't work that way, so you have to have communicative abilities to deal with people in not many way. Today, because of Google and other kinds of things, you can easily procure information, even if you do not have those resourcefulness to deal with human beings. Then also it works to a greater extent, earlier all those things were required. Now even today, if you want to procure, still you are if you are confused. And if you still want to find a space where no books are helping you, then you will have to meet people, you will have to go to the people. You will prepare proper questions, you have to uh 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 ask them, you have to make their mind also ready for what you exactly want to know. What you know already, so you can put this question, this I know, this I know, here I have reached. I have read this many things, now here I have a problem, now here I have a, now how to organize that question? I have a question about how to organize, many times when people ask us like what topic we should take. So, well, that is a very open question, how can we help you? If you put an email or WhatsApp message, that which topic should I work now, we can't tell that, nobody can tell that. And if you tell them tomorrow, you will tell that, well, you told this topic, now give the books. Now after giving the books, now you tell there to go, what to do, everything you do. Now if everything is so clear, if the map is already there and in the destinations are very clear, then what new are you going to? If everything is very clear, it is mapped, then then there is no need to walk on that path, people have walked, so there is already a road. Now why are you walking on that path? So this is like walking in wilderness, nobody knows. Uh uh as as your supervisors, we also don't know everything, so with your research, we also will be learning. You will say this work, that work, well, it will open our eyes also, that help, it also is good. So as a research scholar, you will keep on investigating, where wherever we have reached, we can tell. But if you are going to do only that, then your work is not not going to be original, it is not going to be original. So you are in in a quest of adding a new knowledge to the system, now that that path is not traded by anybody. Supervisors, normally research supervisor are just to guide you. That well, in that direction, you can, if you have to make a choice out of two or three things, then research supervisor can say that they'll try this first, then second, then the third one. But guides are not there to just be with you all the way, they are not going to be with you at each and every step. Which that journey is to be done by research scholar themselves also. So mind and temperament of the research is very important here. Okay, any point, any anything that you would like to add here or ask here at this point? Before we end our discussion with the last uh topic. Yes, anybody? Okay, fine, so the final part, final part of today's discussion is. A a paragraph they is written here, taken from John Livingston lawyer's work and. Uh it is, it is like I read some lines of this paragraph, then we we come to discuss a a few points. Here. Human scholarship, human scholarship. Human scholarship moves and must move within two world, two worlds at once. Human scholarship moves and must move within two worlds at once. The world of scientific method, the world of scientific method. And the world in whatever degree of creative art, of creative art. The postulates of the two are radically different, so obviously we understand science and arts or creative arts and science are very different. The postulates are very different, but then human scholarship, human scholarship has to have the combination of both the things. Uh together, as we gave example that all science or mathematics are highly imaginative, that's why if A is equal to B. That itself that if itself is the imaginations, the theorem, mathematics theorem begins with imaginations. Uh our imaginative work has to be very scientific in its process of exploring knowledge system. When we think of that, then it has to be very scientific also, so all scholarship must move in these two directions. As such, uh research, research which is the primary instrument of science. Research which is the primary instrument of science is felt to be the easier and it is also the more alluring. And so it says that uh we tend to become enamored of the methods. And at times to forget the ends, in that process that is scientific. So sometimes we become too much obsessed with methodology and methods only, rather than what is the end, what is the objective of? Our research, because science is more dealing with methods and other kinds of thing. We and research is scientific, so we have to bring all those scientific tools here and methodology will remain there. But but what we have to keep in mind is that the end, we should not forget the ultimate end for which. For which we are doing our research. To allow in a world the fascination of the means to distract us from the very object for which they are employed. So many times it says that we are distracted, we are distracted here uh uh into the scientific. Methods. And sometimes just a methods remain our research, the ultimate aim or object that while we are doing research. That is many a times lost into uh into that and what is that end? What is that end for which we are doing and that end for literary research is interpretation. It is interpretations there, so at the cost of interpretations. In whatever systematic way our research is, that is humanities researches are done, they remain incomplete. The very aim, very objective of our work should not get lost into. Just the scientific methods that we are doing here. I recall in one interview, Homi Ke Baba, a renowned post-colonial critic, he also said that. That the the way labs are very important for science, laboratories, labor, the same way. What is important for humanities, it is interpretations. And our lab should be full of variety of interpreters, we should be trying on on various things of our interpretations are concerned. That is what we should be constantly doing as people in sciences keep on trying in lab with various things. What we are supposed to do is to keep on trying with interpretations. But we have to keep in mind that interpretations should not be just assumptions, it should not just only be our assumptions. But it should be supported by the evidence, the proof and uh the pursuit of facts should always there without that. And the pursuit of facts should always there, without that, the interpretation has no value altogether also. So that is, these are the things which we wanted to discuss today. Now again, if you have anything to add or any question or you to ask anything. Now we still have five to 10 minutes if you want to ask anything. Yes, anybody? Yesterday we had couple of good questions, so in a similar way, if you have. Any other interesting questions, then you can ask, so it can help us clarify. What sometimes we feel that, well, I think it must be understood by you or you think that, well, it is in this way only we are supposed to take. So those clarifications can happen if you ask something. Okay, so then we can end this, if there are no questions from anybody, then can we? Yes?
Sir, I have a question regarding assignments which we are supposed to submit.
Okay, yeah, okay, we are coming to that assignment, but let us like, we are recording this, so in this case if there are any. Then let us take those questions first and then we will talk about the technicalities of PhD coursework. Okay, so then can we end this, uh, uh, session if there are no questions from anybody?